Good evening and welcome to the April 4th, 2024, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the City Council. Tonight, we have five, which is a quorum. The Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Our work is informed by the city's comprehensive plan, various district plans, and the city code. For some items, the Commission makes a recommendation with the City Council having final decision-making authority. There are three of those items tonight. In other cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application, subject to appeal to the City Council, of which there is one tonight. For each action item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, and then time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight, there are seven items on the agenda. The first item has been withdrawn by the applicant. It was to be a public hearing for preliminary and final development plans, but that item has been withdrawn. So we will move to item number two, which is a public hearing for final site and building plans for renovations at Bryant Park. And Planner Hesbeck has the presentation.
Good evening. It's been a while. I feel like it's not sharing all the way on the screen, but whatever. So yeah, tonight, item two is final site and building plans for renovations at Bryant Park, which is located at 1,001 West 85th Street. So here is an outline of the property. It's zoned R1 and guided as public. All the surrounding zoning is also R1. So the park improvements, there are a variety of them. But a quick summary is a new park shelter, an accessible playground, parking lot updates, sports court additions and relocation, stormwater improvements, and natural resource enhancements. So the Planning Commission has decision-making authority on this application tonight. And the scope of the review by the Planning Commission is to really look at the building, the parking lots, sidewalks, lighting, landscaping, and stormwater improvements. And so we aren't necessarily looking at every single addition that they're adding. This is a rendering that was submitted to the Development Review Committee for the new park shelter building. It is proposed to be a 2,544-square-foot building with solar panels on the rooftop. The building materials are mostly code-compliant, such as fiber cement and stone veneer. But there were some areas on the plans which showed paint, and that is not permitted. So there's a condition that that needs to be changed before permit issuance. As far as landscaping, screening, and lighting goes, the proposed landscaping plan shows 187 trees, which is code-compliant, 89 shrubs, and 91 perennials. So the only thing there that we are unsure if it's code-compliant are the shrubs and perennials. We're still working with the landscape architects to determine the amount of disturbed area. And based on that, we'll determine how many shrubs are necessary. The requirement in the code is one shrub per 1,000 square feet. So we're working on that calculation still. There's also a condition prior to permit issuance that landscaping must comply with code requirements. Similarly, the initial submitted lighting plans did not comply with code standards. We are lacking kind of the initial and maintained plans. But we recently received updated plans, and staff hasn't reviewed those yet. But there is a condition that lighting plans must meet city code prior to permit issuance. And then, lastly, for parking, everything here pretty much met code, the parking space requirement, the parking lot setback. And for park or public uses, there's no specific requirement in our code for like a parking space number. So there are 61 proposed spots, which staff is comfortable with based on a lack of complaints or issues in the past. And just additionally, parking lot island trees aren't required because the parking lot, both parking lots have fewer than 50 stalls, but there are planning to be parking lot island trees in the east parking lot. So that's a nice addition. So with that, staff is recommending approval. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Planner Hesbeck, did, in the plans, is there any indication that some of the mature trees that exist today will be removed as part of the landscape plan?
Yeah, chairperson, Commissioner Goldsman, I believe so. I should have mentioned, we also have the applicant here and two people from Public Works that can answer questions as well, more specifically than that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
If anyone wants to tackle that, or if it's not sure yet, that's okay. Come go ahead and come on up. At least mature trees that are not ash.
Good evening, Commissioners. We have made efforts to preserve as many of the existing trees as we can, especially in the southwest corner along Emerson Avenue. There are several old large caliper or large diameter trunk trees. And along the whole southern line of the park, there are numerous larger trees that we've worked to avoid construction impacts to. There are also at least two, if not three elm trees still present in the park, which we're working to have sidewalks go around and preserve those in place as best we can. There are a handful of trees that will probably be either transplanted or moved or removed entirely. I think there's one cottonwood that may be in decline that needs to be taken out. But otherwise, we have made efforts to save as many trees as we can with the design of the park.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for staff? All right, thank you. This item is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. If there's any member of the public who would like to provide testimony, we do offer three minutes for anyone who'd like to speak on this item. If you could go ahead and sign your name on the ledger there and introduce yourself, and then you will have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Robert Coleman. I'm a resident of Bloomington, and I do not have a car. I get around either by walking or taking the bus. And I, I think I spoke at a City Council meeting of like a month or two ago about that relate, and I spoke in front of relating to a pedestrian improvement at 86th and Emerson. I didn't see that in the plan. It's possible that I just didn't see it, or it's part of something else. But I wanted to give my perspective on that. I have, I've been car-free for like almost two years at this point. And during the last year in Bloomington, I've nearly been hit by a car seven times. And I think that a lot of, it feels like a lot of the problems as a pedestrian can be easily solved. I've had a lot of trouble specifically at intersections where it is, one, one direction has no stop sign, and the other direction has a stop sign, a two-way stop. And that is, that is what is at Emerson and 86th at the southwest corner of the park. And twice during my like daily walk to work, it's happened, I've nearly been hit at the corner of France and 108th. I've nearly been hit twice at the corner of 106th and Xerxes, once at 108th and Xerxes, once at the exit of France and the, the parking lot by Willie McCoy's, and then once in the parking lot of my work. And I've, it feels like, and the, at France and 108th, there are bump outs. It was a four-lane road, and it's converted to a two in that spot. And even then, like the bump outs, I have pictures where grass won't grow on the bump out because people are driving over it all the time. And you can see the tire marks even like throughout, throughout the year, you can see it on Google Maps. And it really does not make me feel safe. And another thing is the lighting on my, on my walk. There's like, there's only a, a street lamp at each intersection, and even then, they're not always working. And I think that lack of lighting is particularly the, the number-one issue in the twice I've almost been hit at 106th and Xerxes, where drivers, and the, it was, it happened the exact same way both times. A driver going south on Xerxes, turning left, and not seeing me until they were a foot and a half in front of me screeching halt. It, it feels like, it, when I, like, I've seen a map of the sidewalks in Bloomington, and many streets do not have any. I'm fortunate that most of my route does have a sidewalk, but in some of it, I'm still walking in the street. When the street isn't plowed, it's really hard for me when the sidewalks aren't plowed. And it feels like when you're, when Bloomington was designed, you're choosing like where you put your money, and like if you're considering like the bar of where you place it on like pedestrian friendliness and car friendliness, it's like it's all the way at the end of the car friendliness. And I feel like we really need to do something to move that bar at least a little bit towards the pedestrian improvements. It feels like the accommodations that have been made have not really been enough. And it just feels like I need to say something before I get killed by a car.
I ask you to wrap up your comments if you could. Thank you.
The clock.
The clock is not on tonight. I'm sorry about that. It's okay. Thank you for your testimony. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony on this item? All right, and it looks like everyone online is also not.
Yeah, Chair Roman, everybody online is either staff or here for another item.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other comments, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion. Before we start discussion, I would like to take an opportunity to, again, our public hearings are not Q and A, but I thank the commenter for the feedback on pedestrian realm in the city. I know the specific thing area you started talking about, 86th and Emerson, we did hear about that from staff as part of the pavement management program, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. That is happening. It would, didn't show up in here because that's just a block past. And I will just speak for myself, as I'm nearing the end of my six years in this body. The staff have heard repeatedly from me about the priority for sidewalks. I know we are doing some work on our streets plan. I don't, until we, realistically, until we overhaul our streets policy, that would say as streets get rebuilt, they include sidewalks, it's going to be a block-by-block, neighborhood-by-neighborhood decision. And I think the comments that we heard from the member of the public who shared comments are, I'm aligned with what we heard because it's, yeah, we were built as a, suburbs were built to be the antithesis of the city. No walking, all driving, and the reality is that's changing. And the cost and the, the infrastructure and the longevity infrastructure means that that stuff takes a long time. Even things like the parks that we're here to talk about tonight, this infrastructure that's there was largely built when the park was built, probably in the 60s. And so the arc is long and slow, but many of us are here, and we will continue to be that squeaky wheel as long as we are here. So on the application itself, I, I don't have any concerns on this. Anyone else like to offer any comments or discussion? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I second your comments about obviously pedestrian safety, as well as when we think about residents that are walking to and from the park, from their local neighborhoods. We want to make sure that those families and those residents and maybe even non-residents are provided safe venues to get there. So I do feel comfortable with the staff's plan and the pavement management plan to put in the proper safety, safety crosswalks that, that they proposed to us a month or so ago. As far as the parks plan here, I was actually really excited to see this plan. Many years ago, we did have the Parks Master Plan presented to us about how the city of Bloomington is revitalizing our aged parks that are really not keeping up with what residents expect or want from our park system. We have some great parks in our neighborhoods, but they don't, they don't meet the amenities that our families and our residents want or need. And so I see this as by being the first step for us to really invest in our neighborhoods and, and create this community that we can gather and exercise and congregate and, and just celebrate the community that we live in, in all seasons. So I think this is fantastic. I'm really excited about the adaptive playground. And the, the sport courts are, are a great addition, and so I think this is great, and I'll be in full support.
Any further discussion? Or a motion? Commissioner Goldsman.
If I can, I can make, make a motion.
Please do.
In case PL 2.
Yeah, Chair Roman, just conferring with Kevin Toski, our city attorney. We're not sure that the public hearing was closed. It might have been. Do you?
We did.
You did?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
We had a motion and a second.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in case PL 2024-27, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve final site and building plans for Bryant Park renovations at 1,001 West 85th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to rec, or to approve final site and building plans at the subject property. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. This is a final decision by the Commission, unless an appeal is received by 4:30 PM on Tuesday, April 9th. Thank you all for your good work on this. Item number three is another public hearing. This is final development plans for a sunshade at a daycare, and Planner O'Day has this one.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So yeah, item three for you this evening is for a major revision to final development plans for a sunshade at an existing daycare facility. The property address is 5,600 American Boulevard West, just located west of Normandale Boulevard and American Boulevard. Surrounding area is office to the northwest and hotel to the southeast, as well as a multifamily residential apartment building to the south. So this, this site is an existing ten-story office building. And located on the bottom floor is Kinder Platts, which is a daycare. And then they have an outside, existing outside play area, just kind of tucked in the middle of the L-shaped building. So they're proposing a sunshade, and according to our code, we don't have a specific standards for sunshades itself. So we kind of lump them in with our accessory structure code. And so that must meet a 20-foot setback from the side property line. And so what they're proposing is a detached approximately 1,700-square-foot fabric sunshade over the existing play area. They're recommending 16 feet from the property line from the side. And their, the sunshade is needed to provide shade because it's unusable during the hot days and reflection off the glass building. So like I said earlier, the applicant is demonstrating difficulty in complying with the 20-foot setback due to the footings of the sunshade needing to be outside of the play area. And then due to the angle of the lot line, it's difficult to meet that 20-foot setback. And then just a note from internal side, if the sunshade were to be attached to the building, our fire prevention department may require sprinkling of the sunshade. And then just to note that the sunshade is closest to adjacent hotel parking lot, which I provided an image on the right hand of the screen, taken from the parking lot of the hotel. And so flexibility measures don't have specific findings, so we use the public benefit test. And playing outside is an important enrichment activity for children. And then the sunshade provides, limits sun exposure to children, which promotes health and safety. And then there is little impact on the adjoining properties. So with that, we are recommending approval. This does go on to City Council. And the applicant from Flagship Recreation, which is the manufacturer of the, the sunshade, is available via WebEx if there are any specific questions.
Thank you. The only question I have, and it may be a question for the applicant, is do you know if the applicant has had conversations with the hotel about the not 20-feet setback?
Chair, I am not aware of any conversation. They might know.
Okay. Other questions for staff? Would the applicant like to speak on this item? Chad, I believe, is online. It's muted, though.
I didn't know if I could unmute that myself. Thank you.
Did you have anything you wanted to speak on this item at all?
I think Ms. O'Day has hit all of the critical points. I can answer any questions if there are any.
My only question is, do you, have you or the daycare had any conversations with the adjacent, the hotel about, I know one of the things we're asked to consider is the less than 20-foot setback. Have you had any conversations with the other property owner on this?
I am actually not certain if the owner has. We can definitely check into that and get back to commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. My question is about the additional users of the office property. Has the owner been in contact with the various leaseholders there besides the Kinder Platts daycare? And have they been in conversations about the sunshade going in and, and any disturbance that that would have to any of the window views on that side of the building?
Great question. I can check in with the owner. I did not inquire on that specific question.
Other questions? Thank you very much. This item is a public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's any member of the public who would like to speak on this item. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Discussion. Commissioner Goldsman.
I'll go first. You know, I think when we look at this, as we lump a sunshade into the code of accessory dwellings, I think about, if it was accessory dwelling, it would be like a a shed or something that is non-transparent. And I see that being a very different application than a sunshade. I also think we look at these as, as this, this body does not like to make exceptions for the concern of setting precedents, that this could open up a can of worms for other things. I think this is a unique enough ask, a unique enough situation that I'm comfortable making those exceptions or making the consideration of allowing that four feet of reduction in setback. I think the, the benefit to that daycare and those employees and children at the daycare outweigh the four-feet concern or the four-feet setback concerns that the city has. Especially when I look at what does a sunshade look like? It's transparent mostly from front to back. And an accessory dwelling would not be. So I will be in support of this application as it sits.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I've said many times that there's no one in government that's lower than us. We're the closest form of government to the people, and the benefit of that is that we're able to take a lens of practicality to applications and recognize when variances or exceptions to the rule, if you will, are worthy. And I do find that in this case, if you look at the neighborhood, I, I don't believe we're going to be disturbing anybody with this canopy. And you look at the public benefit, and I certainly find a public benefit of allowing children to play outside more often. And so with that, I am in support of this application.
Thank you. I, I think I too am. I, my, I was a little bit disappointed that nobody could speak to whether or not the neighboring property had been consulted. On the other hand, the fact that the neighboring property is a parking lot, I would have great reservations if the neighboring property was another build, or another home or a business or was blocking some of it. The fact that we're encroaching four feet closer to a parking lot gives me some comfort in making this kind of a, an exception. And as far as, you know, impact on anyone on floors above, I think it's a good question. I think all of these floors are the same owner. And so while the tenant may find that inconvenient, it's the owner who's making a decision one way or another about their property. So I think it's an excellent question. And again, going back to the, in the absence of hearing from them, in the absence of hearing from the, so I think the, my advice to any of our applicants who come forward is, you know, talk to your neighbors, do your due diligence. They're going to be your most powerful voice in front of this group, but generally, I can support this. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with your statements about, you know, being a, a good neighbor. I think we hear that a lot in this body is conversations go a long way. And hopefully, that property owner has had those conversations with the tenants in the building. Because I know that the, the daycare probably wants to be a good neighbor, too. So it's just good for them to have communication on that as well. As someone who has an 18-month-old who is in daycare and they lack a sunshade, this would be a very welcome addition to the daycare we use. And I know how important it is for kids to be outside and given the public benefit. I think that this is an easy yes for me.
Any additional discussion or a motion? Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Chair, in case PL 2024-3, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend City Council approval of a major revision to final development plans for a sunshade at an existing daycare facility located at 5600 American Boulevard West, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of revision to final development plans at the subject property. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. This item will appear on the April 15th City Council agenda as a consent item. The fourth item is a preliminary and final plat to subdivide The fourth item is a preliminary and final plat to subdivide one lot into two. And Planner O'Day is with us again.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, moving on to item four, uh, as you mentioned, this is a preliminary and final plat to subdivide one lot into two lots at 6701 West 78th Street. This lot look, might look familiar to you all as you approved the development plans just two months ago, uh, for a five-story, 208-unit apartment building and detached 11,000 square foot daycare. As part of this plat, both the zoning, um, and the guidance would remain. And so here is an image of Nine Mile West Fourth Edition. This is the preliminary plat, which is the more detailed, um, plat document. And just to note that the proposed plat meets the minimum site standards for the C4 zoning district. And the dividing line for the two lots would be on the east side of the, uh, daycare. So you have the daycare lot outlined in red and the apartment building lot in, uh, blue. And then here's the final plat document, which, uh, shows the drainage and utility and sidewalk, bikeway easements. And then just to note, um, that park dedication is, is required as a result of the plating. So pretty, uh, simple and straightforward presentation for you. I have the applicant online and this is a city council, uh, approval.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
I'll go first again. Um, thank you, Chair. Question for you, just from a procedural question is, why was the development plan for this property presented separately from the plating of the property? Just wondering procedurally, why, why are they separate?
Chair, um, Commissioner Goldsman, so it was kind of a miscommunication on staff's side and then as well as, um, there was kind of an indication from the applicant's side that they wanted to wait until after. So a little bit of, of both. Yeah.
Could you go back to the aerial, the previous one? There you, uh, next one. Sorry. Um, it's hard to tell in this image. So if we do this, um, division, what is the setback on the daycare and how is that in compliance? Is that, or is that not in compliance with standards for this area?
Chair, so that setbacks were reviewed as part of the development, um, application and those setbacks were, were met.
The setback, uh, the setback on the, not if we create a new lot. And now we have had a building that potentially appears here may run right up to the lot line.
So that's where it gets, um, tricky is where, um, you're looking at site standards, where we're looking at the parcel as a whole instead of each, um, individual lot, if that makes sense. Maybe Glenn can expound upon that. There's a difference between lot and site.
And Chair Roman, uh, commissioners, one important point to, to bring up is that this is one plan development. So it functions as one large site. In those cases, the internal property lines, um, effectively, the, any setbacks to those internal property lines, uh, flexibility is considered automatically granted in the case. We have, uh, many, many planned developments throughout the city where, uh, property lines or internal property lines, um, subdivide the site and often right along building lines, very similar to this.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. So Day, will you remind us of the, the original application? There was a, a proposed parking agreement or something along those lines, a shared parking or a proof of parking? I can't remember exactly what it is, but if you would remind us of that.
Shared parking. Commissioner Albrecht.
Shared.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Day, when we split up a lot like this, how is it, I'm just asking out of curiosity, how is it determined like which property stays 6701 and what is the other property numbered? And what is the process for numbering a new parcel?
Uh, Chair and Commissioner, that's actually a function of our engineering division. They handle kind of the addressing of our lots in Bloomington. So I'm not familiar with how this will be addressed. Maybe Julie Long looks like she's been promoted to panelist and describe.
And I think if you have any thoughts for us, either.
Maybe.
Julie or Brian, whoever wants to take the question.
Uh, Commissioner Roman, um, planning commission, um, Bruce Bunker handles all of our addressing. And what we do is we look at what are the existing addresses and then we try to provide gaps if possible, um, so that the, if anything should get subdivided in the future, there are still addresses to be used. Is that clear? And also there's a whole section in the code that tells you what you should be doing.
Sounds like some good weekend reading, Mr. Chair.
It's not as exciting as you think.
You never know. Thank you for that. Other questions for staff? Commissioner Albrecht.
I'm actually, actually, I'm going to take my question back.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Goldsman.
One question I had is, um, when we reviewed this full development plan, I know that there, uh, there's a lot of drainage, there is a water holding pond, and a lot of times what we're looking at from a development perspective is, um, the amount of impervious surface area, um, the impact to the watershed. So when we divide a lot like this, does that percentage change, um, the impervious surface percentage because it's now a smaller lot? Or does it go with the planned development?
Commissioner, Chair and Commissioner, I did calculate the, um, impervious surface as separate lots. So Lot 1, which is the daycare, is 40%. Lot 2 is 50%. And maximum, I believe in C4 is 90 or 95% maximum impervious. So it's quite large. And they're showing considerably less than that.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? All right. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
No, I don't have really anything to add. We do have our, our civil engineer, um, at the, at the meeting tonight if they have any technical questions that go above my head, but, uh, otherwise, no, I think, uh, Ms. O'Day did a great job of, um, getting everything detailed. And yes, this was not ideal, um, to do these in two different meetings, um, but it just kind of ended up working out this way.
Is there anything else you wanted to add right now? Okay. Questions for the applicant? All right. Uh, this item is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody in the chambers who would like to speak on this item. Seeing none and seeing that no one online is, uh, a member of the public, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Discussion. Or a motion? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. You know, when we saw this the first time, it wasn't my favorite proposal in the world due to its relatively low lack of density on the daycare site, but, um, at that time we discussed it was kind of what it was and, and the idea that we're ever going to get two office towers there is, is pretty unlikely given the current climate of things. And so with, uh, having all of those things done with the previous application, what we're looking at tonight is, um, relatively not controversial in my opinion, and I'll be in support.
Any other discussion or motion? Commissioner Albrecht.
Uh, happy to make a motion.
Please.
In case PL 2024-26, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the city council adopt a resolution approving the preliminary and final plat of Nine Mile West Fourth Edition, creating two lots from one existing lot located at 6701 West 78th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend the city council adopt a preliminary and final plat, this division, at the subject property. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. This item will also appear on the April 15th city council meeting as a consent item. Thank you. Moving along, item five is a TIF review, um, for a project at Lyndale and American and economic development analyst Palermo has the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Commission? Uh, I'm here tonight to talk about 700 American, a tax increment finance review. So, um, to give you a little reminder of this property, which you saw, I believe, uh, November, it went to council in December, so, um, uh, located at Lyndale, the corner of Lyndale and American Boulevard, uh, you have REI kind of in this northern, western corner there and 494 to the, the north there. The city owns the property, but we're selling it to Schaefer Richardson to develop a 128-unit apartment building. This would be senior living facility. It is 100% affordable. Eight units will be affordable to those making 30% of the area median income. Uh, 104 would be at 50% area median income and 16 would be at, uh, 60% area me income. And you can see there's a small commercial space, uh, at the, the corner there as well, about 1,500 square feet. So you're probably wondering why are we here today? You've already approved the project, it's gone to council. Well, we're looking at the financial package that we would be working with. And part of their funding sources for, uh, affordable housing is tax increment financing. So under state statute, there's some findings that the city needs to make in order to provide tax increment financing to fill a gap in their development proposal. So today, um, there's things like, does it qualify as a housing tax dis, uh, housing district, which has certain affordability requirements, which it does meet? Would it, you might have heard of the but-for test, would this property be, or development happen but for this funding? Was it to the highest and best use on this property? And this last item is where the planning commission comes in. Under state statute, you need to review this and make sure that it's consistent with the comp plan or development for the city as a whole. So we look at our 2040 comprehensive plan. There are specific goals that relate to this development. Goal number two is to provide, uh, identify locations and opportunity for new housing, uh, and mixed-use development. So this is a mixed-use development. It's high-density development on a, on a prominent corner. It also meets our goal three of pursuing, uh, reducing housing costs, you know, affordable housing. And also meeting our, our goals for affordable housing is provided by the metropolitan council. So you can see here, we have specific allocation on different of those, uh, income bands that we're looking at and they're meeting that and helping us meet our 30% goal, which is, you know, uh, much harder to get to higher subsidy. So just an overview again, you're looking at, is this consistent with the comprehensive plan? But this will also go to the city council on April 15th for a public hearing. They'll kind of review those other items and make those findings. And it also goes to the HRA board, which will be providing the TIF, uh, and that goes on April 23rd. So with that, I'll answer any questions or here's a motion for you.
All right. As we've seen this before and as, um, Analyst Palermo outlined, it's a fairly narrow focus for this group. So questions for staff? Uh, sorry, Commissioner Isa. Soon. No, it'll come soon. Any questions or then I guess it will be on you for the motion? Oh, yes, sorry, discussion.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I was going to ask you if there needs to be a discussion period before we make.
It's a technically a study item.
Okay.
So is there discussion?
Uh, please.
Please do.
You know, our goal is to determine whether this meets the, this project meets the intent of the long-term plan. That's an awfully vague statement in my opinion, and, um, I think I could find reasons why this, this particular application, um, or this particular project doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, but it's not worth the fight. This thing is, we've, we've already seen the meat of this project and we're not going to stop it here. And so as many reasons as there are not, is that it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan, there's just as many that it does. And as you astutely noted, we have very narrow purview on this, so, uh, I think I'm going to leave it. Where is that?
I don't disagree with you. This, the, this question about TIF always feels to me like when we used to approve, cell phone antennas and had no authority to deny it. So, um, I'm not disagreeing with you one bit, Commissioner Cookton. Any further discussion? Or Commissioner Isa will, yeah, go ahead and feel free to make a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution finding that 700 American Boulevard West redevelopment plan and TIF or TIF plan are consistent with the Bloomington comprehensive plan.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution regarding the TIF plan at the subject property. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Um, and that is the extent of this item. This, as noted, this topic will be at the city council on the 15th and the HRA on the 23rd. Thank you. Item number six is to consider the meeting synopsis from November 2nd. Everyone here was present at that meeting, so, um, I would entertain a motion. Yes, Commissioner Albert.
Oh, yes?
Oh, sorry. Yes, Commissioner.
Apologize. I just had a question around. So then I, I had to take a step back because November 2nd was quite a long time ago. So can, can we talk through why there's been a delay in the, the report? I missed that there was delay until I saw it.
Yeah. Chair Roman, Commissioner Goldsman, uh, two items at play. Uh, one is we tend to prioritize minutes reviews for items that are going to city council soon. So this particular one, there were, I think, items on it that were going to city council that were reviewed and were advanced as draft items, but there are also very large items that haven't gone to city council. And so that's one reason for the delay. The other reason is more a internal reason. We recently, uh, lost some workflow software function, um, that used to help guide the, uh, minutes through the various reviewers. So in the absence of that, we're kind of doing email and, uh, then it tends to get stuck in, you know, by certain reviewers for a while. So that's kind of why we're a little bit late on this one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Happy to make a motion.
Please do.
Uh, I move to approve the draft planning commission meeting synopsis from November 2nd, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting synopsis. Discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. All right. Hold on to your seats for the planning commission policy and issue update because it's a long one.
Yeah. Chair Roman, commissioners, it, as often occurs, it's kind of a feast and famine, uh, situation. The April 25th agenda, we actually have no items scheduled and then we're continued tonight to that agenda, so, uh, that meeting would be canceled on April 25th. However, uh, May 9th is a very, very, uh, full agenda. Right now we have 10 items on the agenda. However, the, uh, good news is that several of these items are city-initiated items, so I will be exploring with the kind of project managers of each of these items, uh, which, are not time-sensitive and can be deferred to a future meeting, the second meeting in May. So I suspect that several will, uh, drop off the agenda, but, uh, as of today, what's tentatively tracking towards that, again, 10 items. The first two, the, uh, final site and building plans for stadium improvements at Kennedy High School and then at Jefferson High School. Third, final site and building plans for parking lot. and building plans for parking lot expansion, site improvements, that's at 7900 Chicago area. Fourth item is a conditional use permit for a health club that's at the Oxford Service Center, 9501 Lyndale. Fifth item would be a study item, park-and-fly pro forma analysis. This is something the Planning Commission requested be reviewed annually when that interim use permit brings forward a pro forma to demonstrate that its milestones have not been met. Sixth item is a public hearing for city code amendments regarding speed limits. Second item is a related public hearing on adoption of a speed limit map. Eighth item, city code amendments regarding environmental standards. Ninth item is a study item regarding administrative streamlined development approval processes. And then the 10th item, a study item on single-room occupancy housing standards. So we know that there'll be a lot of public interest in items one and two, and for that reason, we think we'll need to shift some of the other items that we can shift.
Earning your paycheck on May 9, aren't we? Other items that anyone on the commission would like to bring up during this? Yes, Commissioner Goldsman.
One question I have, just for fellow commissioners, I know that the planning, National Planning Conference is not this weekend, but next, and so I just wanted to get a poll of who's planning on attending, so that we can coordinate. Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned until May 9.